Good evening. It is Wednesday, April 2nd. Is anybody here for the school choice public hearing? Okay, so I'm gonna open the school choice public hearing at 6:31. There's nobody here for it, so I am gonna close it at 6:31, the school public choice hearing. And I'm gonna call in to order our Northborough School Committee open meeting at 6:31. And we have one remote participant, and Lauren Bailey-Jones is absent tonight. So we will have a remote participation, so we'll call vote for anything. And we're open. Okay. Audience sharing. Okay, great. New business, Proctor and Peaslee PTO presentations tonight. Thank you for coming in, we really appreciate it. And then we have principal reports, and then we'll have a math update. So you guys can decide, Proctor, Peaslee, who wants to go first?
I'd go with Proctor first.
All right. Come on up. You can sit at the lunch table, right up front.
Hello, everyone.
Sure, come on up.
Oh, good, I did an update. Hello, everyone, my name is Lisa Smith. I am Proctor PTO president for, I think, three years, two years now? It's just been a while, super volunteer. And I'm here to give you a little recap about what's going on at Proctor. I have Pam Markey, my co-president, there helping me as well. Also, we have a new treasurer, Carrie. I'm gonna go with C, because I always mess that up. And we have a vacation of kindergarten moms who have stepped things up. So we're excited for the next few years, as far as faculty goes. All right, so PTO events, I will actually read through these, and you can go to the next slides and check out some pictures if you'd like. We started doing some family fun nights, so we had a back-to-school party. This was, we chalked the walk before the teachers came in, so we had a really cute setup before they all started. Over there, you can see Mrs. Mahoney, she was willing to be silly-streamed. We had our Fun Run, and if you reached a certain level of fundraising, you got to silly-stream Mrs. Mahoney. So if you want to go on to the next one. This is, we invited, in the fall, they do a bullying presentation, it's Perfection on Wheels. They do a pretty fun BMX show, and you can see they're jumping over teachers in both of those shops, so we had some real troopers. It's fun to get the kids outside. It really is a very physical show, they got pretty excited. And then they talk about, they have some points about bullying that they talk about, and it's just a fun way to kind of get the kids outside and also talk about that message on bullying. All right, we also, we did our Apple Fest parade. You can see there, we invested in a new Waddles costume, and we had to buy a big and a small body, because sometimes we had students, such as my second grade daughter, who gets to be Waddles. We also, you can see our trunk retreat that we participated in in the fall, that's that big picture off to the side. And then also, we like to do around the holidays, we do a claytime fundraiser. We host it in our cafeteria, you can do cute little things like that. Also, along those days, what else do we do? We also host a holiday shop, where everybody gets to come and they can pick out the little trinkets and things like that. So that's always fun. We did our book fair in the fall, and we'll have one in the spring. And if you go to the next slide, you can see, we invited an author, Jarrett Posofka. He does the Lunch Lady series and a couple other things. I honestly didn't realize until he came that he had come to Proctor, but it was well before the tenure, I have a fifth grader, so it was before my kids were there. So he was excited. We had two separate presentations with him, he did a K through 2, and then a 3 through 5. And then he also pulled out all the fifth graders, and they had a special workshop with him for an hour about how to make graphic art, and to make comic books and stuff like that. Another big thing that we did is we kind of stepped up our staff appreciation this year. We've been feeding our staff a lot more this year. So, you know, back to school, we catered to Wegmans, parent-teacher conferences that half-day, we were able to partner with Restaurant Night, and we bought all the teachers' Anzio's pizza, and then we actually got the kickback from it, so that was really nice. We fed them during the holidays. Read-a-thon, which was when our author came to visit, we also fed them. We've given them some Amazon gift cards around the holidays as a thank you. And the really exciting one is a NAMM's over in Southborough on Route 9. They donated an entire lunch to our staff recently, and it was literally worth two full lunches. It was incredibly generous. And we didn't even realize they would do that, they completely offered it up, so we were super grateful for that. We also fund teacher grants. So we funded a setup that's gonna go in front of the office with some beanbag chairs, it's a relaxation area, yes, a chill zone. So we gave them funds for that, we bought a new foam wedge for the gym. What else do we do? We always fund the math bags. The library will get about $1,000 of books once everything is done with that upgrade. And of course, we're going to take, instead of Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week in May, we're gonna spread it out and do five separate days, maybe once a week, to kind of make it, spread it out, make it easier to execute, and then make everything a little bit more special, instead of being completely compressed into that. So here you can see our expenses. We have a few scholarships, we've had some PTO overhead, just as far as replacing the Waddles costume and a few evergreen items that we bought, like a mobile speaker and things like that. Staff appreciation, we upped this year. Staff grants are right in there as well. Enrichment includes that author visit and also the BMX presentation. And we also fund all of the buses for the field trips. The parents still do fund as much as they can of the actual admission to the field trip, but if there's scholarships or if there's any sort of difference with that fundraising, we always float that difference as well. Then, so for fundraisers, we've actually been a little light. We were lucky enough to have some carryover from last year, so we actually took away our Read-a-thon this year and just made it an author visit and an event, wasn't actually a fundraiser. But otherwise, we get about $100 every month from the Bay State Textiles. I had a volunteer who was able to really ramp up our Restaurant Night, so we've had one almost every month, which we haven't had in maybe two years. Coffee Pond, are the pictures, we made about $200, $200, $300. Benevolity is one, I actually discovered last year through my husband's employer, Dell. Benevolity is a way that you can, larger corporate companies like Dell or Paychex, I think is another one, they really like to match nonprofits, and so you can set yourself up in a portal. And with my husband, he earns volunteer hours, and then they match that, and then that all gets donated to us. So that's been a huge help. We didn't do anything to do that, we just are lucky enough to receive it. Our biggest fundraiser this fall was the Fun Run, which we had a lot of fun running around, it's pretty self-explanatory. And also, coming up on Saturday, we have our other big fundraisers, the Spring Fair with our online auction. So if you go to the next slide, you can see things are a little estimated right now, but you can see our biggest events. We actually are lucky, we host family fun events not as fundraisers, but they do tend to kick back some money, which is pretty nice. And then our Fun Run, we raised about $5,000, and we're hoping our Spring Fair will estimate about $6,000. So right now, our expenses are about the same as our fundraising, if not, we do have some money floated so that we can carry that difference. So, any questions? I'm very red when I pull that.
Okay, so if a parent out there has not gotten their trinkets to the boxes, or their items to the raffle.
That's a compliment.
If there's a parent out there in the world at Proctor who is still trying to get those items in, how much longer do we have?
Good news. We will take your trinkets. So we do a trinket drive. When we do the Spring Fair, we use Crystal Entertainment, we have all these inflatables, it's a carnival atmosphere. And then we also do these smaller games in the hallway that our parent run and kind of parent-designed, and they win trinkets. And lucky for you, if you've got a plethora of trinkets at your house that you don't want anymore, we will take them and give them back to your child as a prize, as a sort of service. So the box is still there. Pam and I just went through all the trinkets yesterday, but we will add more trinkets.
Somebody reached out to me right before I got here and was like, hey, I have a kindergartner and I need to bring a raffle item, can I still do that?
You absolutely can. The easiest way to do the raffle basket is to Venmo money directly to that. If you have a physical item, you can reach out directly to, Michelle is doing the Lego basket for kindergarten, you can reach out right to her, and that's not a problem. And we appreciate everything that everybody does at any point in time.
And their fair is gonna be a little different this year, because no...
No food, no fun.
No food, no fun.
Wait, we fall outside.
Because the inflatables, right?
No floats, no food, no fun.
Luckily, we fall out of the food, we're okay in the food, but... So yes, so we have removed, we used to have three physical inflatables. We had an obstacle course, a bouncy house, and something else that the kids would climb on and bounce and get out all their jumps. And so, once we...
Rock climbing, I think.
Yes. Yeah, oh, the big slide, that's, yeah. So we took out those three, and luckily, Crystal Entertainment has so many different options that we replaced them out. We have like a holly ball thing, and like a, yeah, like a basketball duck. It's gonna be great, we're really...
You're awesome.
Yeah. So there's plenty of things to do, and we really try to cater to K through 5.
Any questions?
Just one comment. I like the idea of having one day for teacher appreciation each week. I think teachers will really appreciate that.
That's what we're hoping, go a little, be like, oh, it's a little lift in the weekend. I mean, I'm not a teacher, so I'll take it.
But they have really appreciated that. One of the things that Lisa didn't touch upon is also providing snacks for our monthly faculty meetings, which is, you know, they're at the end of the school day, and just having snacks, like, here we go, we're gonna do some professional learning, and so that's been tremendous. Really, so... Well, we appreciate all the hard work that you put in personally, and you have a team, you know, your team puts in.
I feel, yeah.
I might have experienced it once.
Might have experienced a little bit of it, yeah.
It's a hard job, it's, you know, think, listen, the hardest thing is getting people to volunteer, and I think people don't realize that you don't have to be a board member, you don't have to do it, like, just come, help out little things, you know? And a little bit of help can go a long way, to make your kids experience.
I'm very grateful that I can, I have, I can do this while they're young, but yes, I'm always appreciative of any sort of volunteerism that we get.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, thank you so much.
And now we have Peaslee.
I think this is the first time we've ever had a cafeteria table.
I know. I was like, I don't know.
Well, at Peaslee, we would be like...
Well, that's true.
So this is good.
This is nice. So I'm Marissa Smann, I'm the president of Peaslee PTO. This is my first year doing it, last year I was co-chair. So we have a new co-chair this year, it's Crystal Rodriguez. Our communication assistant, Claire Freck. We have two treasures, so Amanda and Ella. Ella will be moving into the treasurer position next year, so it was kind of a transition year, but she's still doing, helping Daisy Milton with enrichments. And then our teachers, Mrs. Dunnay and Ms. Melissia, and of course, our principal, Dr. Cooley. I can't say enough about the group of ladies, though, because I work full-time, so this is my other full-time job, so we've all just been a team doing this, so again, it's been great. So for this year, oh, I think we missed... Our fundraising efforts were to support enrichment and spirit activities to cover increasing the cost of the bus as well. So I heard a lot of feedback from parents being on soccer fields and everything, so I was trying to get back to how we can support the parents and what they're wanting. And one of the things that I found is that they didn't know where their money was going. So at the beginning of the year, we did a survey, and we asked parents, do you want general PTO meetings? That was something we had kind of stopped doing, because no one was showing up, but I thought maybe we change the time or see what parents want. We also asked what they would like for fundraising activities as well as spirit events. And one thing we asked is whether they would like different fundraising activities or just a one-and-done donation, direct donation fundraiser. And surprisingly, most parents, or maybe not surprisingly, most parents just asked, can I just pay a certain amount and be done with all of the fundraising? So we tried that this year, and it actually ended up being very successful. We raised over $10,000 for our, from our one-and-done direct donations, and that was done in October. And this was in lieu of some of our smaller fundraisers, so we didn't do a Fun Run this year. And that was, maybe, we were thinking about maybe using that as spirit, but this year we decided we'll skip the Fun Run and just try the one-and-done. We also found that we needed general PTO meetings more in the evening, but maybe not every month. So we did do them once every three months. And one of them included math presentation by Mrs. Greenspan and Mrs. Lizzit. And it was really great, we had a great turnout, we learned about the new math curriculum, which is great, because I do hear nothing from my fourth grader, so I found out what they were doing, and what will be coming in. So it was really wonderful, and from that, we did generate more parents coming in, and that actually got a few more volunteers from us. So a lot of our fundraisers, we did the one-and-done, and then we also just finished our Read-a-thon fundraiser, and silent, we did the silent auction back in January. And then the little ones, such as the Easy Breezy, includes Restaurant Nights, Box Tops, Textile Bin, and then we also had business sponsorships. So people into that. So I believe that my actual budget is missing, but we did approve a budget this year of $27,000. So we did increase it by $2,000 from last year. We wanted to put more money into enrichment and more money into our staff appreciation. So at the beginning of the year, I did send out, also sent out PTO sponsor letters to 200 companies around Northborough. And this year, we decided to base them off kind of a tier level. So if they donated a certain amount, we called them a gold sponsor, if they donated another amount, it was silver. And we based off whether they put, we put them into our parent square, or if we put them onto, like, Facebook. But we were asking, we were happy with any donation, so it was just, any type of sponsorship is really great. So we did get quite a bit of companies to also give for the sponsorship. And one thing we also found for the direct donations is that a lot of parents did, their companies did, do match basing as well. So a lot of the money came from matching. And we'd like to thank the Northborough Garden Club for their generous grant as well, so we'll use that towards plants in the spring. So for enrichments this year, we do try to do two per grade. Some of these, we don't pay, some of them are free, and I didn't put all the free ones on, I think some of them are missing. But we have Children's Dentistry of Northborough, America's Best Defense, they did an anti-bullying, they always do a really wonderful job. And then in terms of, we had Discovery Museum come in for grades 1, 2, and 3, they were a great hit. I volunteered for one of them, and the kids were, had so much fun playing, it was a sound. Delilah the Whale, it was this giant whale, I didn't get to see it, but my fourth, that was a big hit as well, my fourth grader couldn't stop talking about walking through a whale.
They go inside, like, you get to see, like, what it looks like inside a whale?
Yes. And then they present inside and explain what the view is, so the kids walk through, they sit inside the whale, and then that's where the presentation is. They loved it. And then they come out and they tell them about the funding that they put toward their research, and the kids were just enthralled.
And that's a separate company, it's not like part of the Delilah the Whale, it's not like from the Discovery.
No, it's a separate, it's kind of a, what do you call that, like a no-fund...
Nonprofit.
Nonprofit, I think. First date, then cash, you know?
We also have Hands on Nature for kindergarten grades 1 and 2, Helmet Design, the fifth grade did that. And then in the spring, we'll have Pumpkins, they'll have Pumpkins come for the incoming kindergartens, current kindergartens and grade 1s, as well as we'll have the Skygoon inflatable Planetarium, which will be a whole school, a whole school event.
And it's not an inflatable where it's an exercise inflatable, it kind of has, it's a globe, like a...
We'll invite it. It'll be inspected.
No running in and out of it.
I'll change the wording next time. So we've tried, our mission is to bring together a community. As I said, I'm new, so I'm trying to just raise, for parents to raise awareness of what's going on in their school, and where the money's going, and just to have fun. Maybe if they see, have fun and experience the community, we might get volunteers that way as well. I'm very big on trying to get volunteers. So we did a welcome back picnic and ice cream truck at the beginning of the year. We've had Apex Days, and we just did one at Altitude Jump Park on Monday. We've done celebration books where kids can, the parents can buy a celebration book for their month if they would like, for a birthday. We do monthly spirit days where, during this time, we collect donations for the food pantry. Winter Fest, we just had that in January, at the end of January was our Winter Fest. We had a groundhog theme this year. We did have Crystal Entertainment come, but they did the different throwing carnival games, which I think went over great, all the kids really loved them, from what I could tell. The Cookies in the Corner, we had a cake wall, and those were little pandas made by one of the parents that she donated to, for the cake wall. And we had Paint Your Own Pottery as well, so we had, they did little decorations that came after, so it was a really fun event, and that's my little boy with his, at the groundhog.
Next time, we're gonna need samples of those cookies, just to make sure that they're above board for the students, you know?
And I think for spirit, I think we'll do the end-of-year celebration coming up as well. So then for staff appreciation, we did the welcome, we had a welcome-back luncheon, as well as we added supplies to the staff room as well for the beginning of the year. We did a recovery breakfast after the first PTO meeting. Valentine's Day treats, we did Valentine's Day treats this year, in which we got the Nothing Bud cakes, donated little gift cards for everyone to get a free bun, a free cake. And Whoopi Pie Truck came during the past conferences, and then we'll do Teacher Appreciation Week and then End-of-Year Luncheon. These are just little pictures from all of the events going on around the Winter Fest. Thank you.
Thank you so much, it's amazing. As I said, I'm always excited to hear what's going on with other schools, just to see, you know, to hear all the fun stuff that they're doing. The kids look so happy with everything that you're doing, so we appreciate all your hard work with everything that you do. Did anyone have any questions? I mean, I was asking my question. I have a hard time waiting. It's gonna be really hard in a couple more months when I'm not at the chair, and I can't talk freely, you know? So I'm just enjoying the time while I have it. Thank you so much, thank you for coming in tonight, and thank you for presenting to us. Really, as Joan always says, your fundraising and your helping, it really helps us with our budgets and stuff, and to be able to give the kids a more fun experience that unfortunately we can't with our budgets, they don't allow it, so we appreciate all the stuff that you do.
And you are the last PTO presentation, so just, we're amazed by all that PTOs do for our schools. You do make a difference, and I think the students are better for it, and the students feel, I think, are appreciated, and I think teachers appreciate it, so thank you. And also, I'd love to know the date of the Planetarium. Show up, that's right up my alley. Mary, you can send me the date.
I will. And he's not talking about the inflatable?
No. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Mrs. Mahoney, do you want to do principal presentation? Principal report?
Principal report. All right, so we have a general update for all four elementary schools, and then we have just some school-specific ones. So at all four elementary schools, we're getting ready for the upcoming ELA MCAS testing for students in grades 3 through 5. Huge shout-out to Kathy Carmini for her incredible support in organizing the logistics and training faculty and staff. In addition to testing preparations, our elementary teams are also looking ahead to next year. We've begun working with district administrators to thoughtfully build our master schedules for our 25, 26 school year. And as part of our preparations for the transition to middle school for our current fifth graders, Principal Karp and Assistant Principal Bean recently hosted an informative session for our fifth-grade parents and caregivers. We're grateful to them for helping our families feel supported and get ready for this next exciting chapter. And our teachers have also been busy completing the SABR's SEL Universal Screener for our students. We're looking forward to using this valuable data to help inform classroom placements and strengthen our Tier 2 supports to meet students' social-emotional needs. Another thank you to Kathy Carmini for supporting our schools in taking this data. At Lincoln Street School, during the last week of March, our PE teacher and school nurse partnered with the American Heart Association to participate in Kids' Heart Challenge. Students developed and enhanced their jumper-upping skills while raising over $1,200 for the American Heart Association. This was a wonderful opportunity to kick off Wellness Week in the school. And April brings new opportunities to test students' academic growth, social skills, and hidden talents. Our 4th-grade drama group will perform skits for their classmates on April 11. Our second annual scooter hockey event will happen during an assembly on April 17, and the Lincoln Street School art show will close out the month on April 30. At Peaslee, we continue to focus on wellness throughout this week, utilizing the SEL Week and Wellness Week Choice Board, created by our SEL leaders, Howie Buchanan and Tara Slattery, and using the SEL Book Collection organized by our school librarian, Claire Kelsey. We look forward to upcoming events, including a few PTO-sponsored enrichments. K students will visit the Handover Theater to see Teeth the Cat on Friday, April 3. 3rd graders will experience a visit from Channel 5 Meteorologist on April 15. All students are having a blast participating in the March Mathmas ST Math Championship, led by Ariella Greenspan, where competing students to see which class can solve the most Gigi puzzles. Students will be celebrated with a dance party because of their hard work during our Read-a-thon, having read over 30,000 minutes. The author, Allison Hall, will visit with our K2 students, and we will have our Sports and Hobby Spirit Day and Food Drive on April 17. Lastly, at Peaslee, 4th graders will also share the hard work in their ensemble class when they perform a play they've been working on with our music teacher, Katrina Wayland, on this day. All right, shifting to Proctor. At Proctor, our Penguins are welcoming spring with a lot of energy and enthusiasm. Last week, our 4th graders led a school-wide spring into mindfulness huddle, and we're also gearing up for this Saturday's PTO Spring Fair and online raffle event, and participating in the Kids' Heart Challenge, similar to Lincoln Street School, to promote wellness. Adding to the fun, our staff surprised students last week with an underground spirit week, where students had to guess the mystery theme each day. Lastly, Mrs. Iannocconi is piloting a Before School During Morning Recess ST Math group, where we have students, we have identified students using the data to be able to support students with additional time and support during their math. So far, this is going well, and we look forward to growing the opportunity. So overall, it's been a fun way to kick off spring at Proctor. At Z Schools, Z students have been engaged in several exciting hands-on learning experiences over the last few weeks. As a culminating activity for their American West Module and Witten Wisdom ELA Core, our 2nd graders took part in Pioneer Day, where they played games, created crafts, and explored what life was like during that period. This week, 5th graders dissected owl pellets as part of their science studies on ecosystems and food chains, marveling at the fascinating discoveries inside. Meanwhile, during PE classes, students have been participating in project adventure, pushing past their fears and discovering what they can achieve as they climb. It's been incredible to watch their growth over the past few weeks. At Melican, thank you to Kate Getchel, Music Director, and our Assistant Directors and instrumental music directors for supporting our nearly 90 students over the past three months as they prepare for their performances of Disney's The Descendants, which took place on Friday and Saturday at Algonquin. We sold over 1,250 tickets to the show. Today, Principal Karp received this email from a community member, quote, "I just wanted to send a note to say that my husband and I went to the play on Friday night, and we felt it was fantastic, all involved, did a great job. We did not have anyone in the play, so our review is not biased. We are senior citizens, but we feel that the Northborough schools are excellent, and we continue to support them. Thank you for all you do for our young people," end quote. Thank you to Algonquin for the use of their auditorium and Scott Arnold and Eric Vincent for helping in the pit. Thank you also to the families who supported this enormous effort with costumes, sets, props, makeup, the concession stands, ticket scanning, and the cast party. This was truly a collaborative effort and the show was wonderful. Our unified basketball season concluded last week. All of our students grew immensely over the course of the season. Thank you to our coaches. All sixth, seventh, and eighth graders participated in session one of the ELA MCAS today with small groups, individual, and small section testing. We had 66 testing locations and Proctors. Thank you to our cafeteria staff for combining sixth and seventh grade lunches. Tomorrow, all students will participate in session two of the ELA MCAS with math, science, technology, and engineering and civics MCAs taking place in May. We're almost there. Alright, spring sports began yesterday. Approximately 20 student athletes signed up for softball and 20 for baseball and over 80 student athletes signed up for track. We're thankful for our coaches and for the parent volunteers who are assisting with track this season. On April 10th, our PTO is holding an eighth grade fun night at Roller Kingdom from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Students are excited about this social event. And that's it?
Thank you so much. Things about Melican, the lunch MCAs, that reminded me, yes, I did hear about that today. My children got to sit there. I have a sixth and seventh grader and they got to sit together because usually sixth grade is separate, but seventh grade is an eighth grade thing. So I think they liked seeing each other, but they didn't like the crowd. It's very crowded to have all the lunches together. Yeah, yeah, the street lights are on, yeah, right? But another thing that Melican did do was they did a halfway through, halfway through middle school last week? And they basically, for the seventh graders, it's their halfway time at Melican. So they, you know, done the sixth or eighth halfway, so it's like halfway to go like, and they had a blast, the kids had a blast doing it and stuff like that. And they had activities at lunch and stuff like that. I guess they used to do it years ago and they hadn't done it in a while and then so they brought it back.
That's great.
And I know when you guys write your reports, it's like, you're writing like about what's like now. You forget like all the fun things that happened like earlier in the month and stuff, so. Those are good things that I did know also, but thank you so much. Good luck with your fair this weekend.
We're excited. No inflatables though.
Just for the record, the weather looks nice too.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate you coming. As always, you're welcome to stay, but we completely understand if you want to sneak out at any point, so no pressure on staying. Moving along on our agenda, we've got our mathematics update by Kathy Lazott and Dr. Stephanie Reinhor.
You are the first person who pronounces my name correctly. That's cool. It's good of you for that.
It's as if I might have heard your name once or twice before.
Yes, because math-
Positive, all positive.
I know I'm following the inflatable whale, but it is math, so it's very, something to be very excited about.
I know. I've heard your name, but I don't think we've ever met.
I know.
So welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm excited to give the update for math. So, yeah, so we just want to begin. We'll start with our math vision for instruction. This is just kind of what grounds our work. We really are looking to make sure we're providing for students a comprehensive and coherent engaging learning experience. We want to make sure that they have a deep understanding of mathematical concepts where we're creating environments where they feel included and safe to, you know, share their voice and their thinking around mathematics. We want them to be, you know, deep critical thinkers and be ready for whatever pursuits they have in life. So this is kind of what grounds our work when we think about elementary math. And so we are in phase three of our curriculum instruction review, which is the launch phase. So we had decided last spring to adopt a new curriculum, Eureka Math Squared. And we're doing our implementation in two phases. So this year, we are in Phase One, which we call our early adoption phase. And we'll follow up next year with our full implementation and continue to monitor how our implementation goes. So just a quick, so what does it mean to be in this launch phase? We have 23 classrooms across the district who are using Eureka Math Squared as the curriculum. So that includes 14 classrooms specifically in Northborough. We have all grades from K to five that are represented with a group of teachers. For Northborough, it's every grade level except for grade three. And we have at least one team per building who are using the curriculum. And our goal with this was really to, what could we learn from? It's a big shift when you change curriculums and we just recently, you know, shifted ELA a couple of years ago. So we wanted to just kind of do a slower rollout for teachers to get a feel. And so by having this first round of implement, implementation, we are able to see, you know, what works really smoothly and then what are some areas that maybe when we roll it out with all of our classrooms that we can work on. So it's been tremendous. We've learned a lot from the teachers that are doing it now. They have a lot of insight for the, you know, the next round of teachers and we're really looking forward to providing them with a lot more information as they enter into this. So what we've been able to provide for our next round of teachers is, we've given them a full PD with Great Minds, which is the company that makes Eureka Squared. And they've had a half-day with TNTP, which is a consulting group we use that we consult with, with the Department of Education. So they've been able to experience some professional development and they also have this opportunity where they can connect with people who are already doing it. So we're encouraging teachers to maybe pop into those classrooms where they're seeing it now that they have a greater understanding of what the program is. And then we'll use our early adopters come next fall to help us launch some additional professional development for now.
Does that, sorry, does that mean the grades, K, no, three, does that mean that some schools, if you're in first grade, you might not be doing the same thing as the other class in first grade?
No, so the, so the teams are doing it. So the example would be at Proctor, our kindergarten entire team is doing it and our fifth grade team at Proctor is doing it.
Okay.
Lincoln Street is our first and second grade teams.
Okay.
But so, so the entire grade level will get it.
Not, not all of those grades at one school.
Correct. Yes, you got it. Yep. And so just kind of what has the experience been for our students? I was able to gather some feedback from some of our fifth grade students. And we focused on the left-hand side. You'll see what our priorities were when we were selecting a new program. We really wanted it to be, you know, student-led and child-centered. We wanted limited reliance on, you know, wordy problems that we kind of, our current program, though it's a very good program, it was one of the areas where we were looking to improve on. And if you look at some of the quotes that our students gave, one of this one's my favorite. "I like how simple and straightforward the questions are. Our old program was really twisty and confusing." So if you look, the students are recognizing things that we were looking for. You know, we were looking for it to be more hands-on. We really want to make sure when we're teaching mathematics, we're going through these really critical phases of concrete representational abstract. And you'll see like students are recognizing that. It's more, their words are, it's more hands-on. I feel more confident using it. We looked for a variety of assessments and we had a student comment on, "I like the exit tickets because I know it refreshes what I've learned that day." And connecting to, you know, previous learning and you see that right in their own, in their own statements. So we've, you know, gotten a lot of positive feedback, not just from the teachers, but from the, you know, some of our students as well. And then we continue to do ST Math. So our focus this year has really been driving deeper into data and how to use that data to support all of our students. So some of our professional development has been around what tools can we provide students to help them work more independently? Puzzle talks are kind of a way to engage the whole class in using one of the ST Math puzzles. And again, it helps our teachers model what our thinking might be as we're, you know, approaching areas that we might get stuck in a puzzle. And then, as mentioned in some of the PTO updates about the peer mentoring. So we have these little pockets where older students are maybe helping some of the younger students kind of work through some of the, some of the puzzles there that they might be getting stuck on. So we've been having a lot of success with that as well. And my, oh, sorry, to go back, my favorite is the little student in the corner. It's hard to see, but he, he says stuff. Can you read that?
He says, "My future is bright because I like ST Math."
I mean, he feels it, so. Again, from the words of the babes.
Yep. So I'm gonna keep us going with sort of connecting what is going on in the elementary schools and thinking about what's going on in the middle school. Some of these slides you have seen before when Kathy and I provided an update a year ago. One of the things we talked about with both elementary and middle school was our focus on fostering effective math teaching practices and that our selection of curriculum resources, this was a, you know, a central tenet. And the circled in the middle there, the building procedural fluency from conceptual understanding, that was often the cornerstone, particularly the procedural fluency in the past. And it's still important and it is still part of our practice, but there is now much more emphasis, both in what Kathy was talking about at the elementary level and in the middle school, on the reasoning and problem solving, the mathematical discourse, productive struggle, surfacing student thinking and having students being able to defend their thinking. So the other thing that we talked about last, I think it was last year or the year before, was that in doing this, there's a real shift in the structure of lessons. And what probably many of us experienced as we went through school was a really traditional format where the teacher models a procedure, which is often referred to as the I do. The students, together with the teacher, get to try some similar problems to what was modeled, the we do. And then the you do, students work very similar problems independently. And this cycle sort of repeats in a traditional math class. And what we're moving to in both the elementary and middle school is a more contemporary lesson format where students are working together to solve problems and students and teachers are discussing the strategies, but, but not necessarily upfront. It's not, you know, necessarily, okay, here's what we're about to do, now you go try it. It's let's dive into some problems. Now let's talk about what you're noticing, what the reasoning is and surfacing that and the teacher helping to facilitate that conversation and make the mathematical connections. So at the middle school level, we're in squarely in that implementation phase. We're in our second year of the Carnegie Learning Math Program. We did a full implementation in the first year, so everybody's in the second year. And we're really supporting that implementation, providing ongoing professional development to both teachers and leadership and refining the work that we're doing. We think of implementation as a five-year process. It really takes time, particularly when we're trying to make a shift in the approach, which is what I was just explaining. So some of the supports that continue to be in place are that we have an excellent partnership with Carnegie Learning. We have a coach, Carrie, who works with the teachers and has one more visit coming up. And she spends a full day at Melican. Combination of observing and giving feedback, sometimes co-teaching or modeling a lesson and sometimes planning sessions with teachers. So this is, I believe, this will be, I think, her fifth visit this year, so we've been working with her throughout the year. In addition, we have a leadership coach, Jack, who has been working with us since when we first started looking at the materials and has continued to support us throughout the implementation project. And he visits multiple times a year and meets with me, Principal Karp, Assistant Principal Bean. We visit classes, sometimes Greg is able to join us. We observe, we debrief, and we're really calibrating our understanding of this shift in instructional practice and the types of feedback we can give to teachers and how we can best support the process. We also have partnership meetings with Carnegie where we look at data and sort of understand we are, set goals and then understand where we are relative to the goals. And we have math curriculum leader meetings, which is our middle school curriculum leader, Chrissy Lincoln, who's one of the teachers at Melican. Kathy Lazott represents the elementary and then Chrissy's counterpart from Trotter and our high school department head. And we meet monthly and that is another support system for this process. And just as a reminder, as we work through all of the things I was just sharing, we're focusing on both what Carnegie refers to as the textbook lessons, which is really those rich tasks where students are discussing the mathematics and working together with peers. And then they also have the Mathia online software, which is adaptive software where it's the more individualized learning, although they do often collaborate as they do it. But they can move at their own pace and the software adapts depending on how they're doing. So those two components are at play and our coaches and, and support systems are all focusing on both. And we are happy to answer questions. Great question. It is part of Carnegie. And Carnegie refers to their program as a blended learning program that has the textbook, which is paper and pencil. And the Mathia program, those are both coming from Carnegie.
I heard Joan.
Thank you, Kelly. I have five questions.
You can only answer two.
The first one I have is that you talked about the teachers, the faculty that are being the first level of the implementation. Will these teachers also be mentors as you expand into the other grade levels?
Yes, that's our goal. Yep. So they will be able to hopefully provide some professional development for their grade level peers as well as be a support person within their school as the rest of the team, as the rest of the teams in their school implement this next year.
Okay. Could you explain a little bit if there is any remediation or extra support that is within this program for the different levels of students that we have?
So I think the best way to think about, some of the research that has come out is really reflecting on the supports you use for our, for remediation really should be within the same program. So to have something separate and different. So with Eureka Math, they build in, within each lesson, they offer very specific targeted supports that teachers can implement and it is a variety of things. It could be language supports. We're really emphasizing, you know, UDL. So when we're planning a lesson, how do we teach to the margins, thinking of that when we go into a lesson? So they don't provide something that is sub-separate for the program, but it's all built in within the tier one instruction. There's multiple levels of support that they provide for teachers in order to provide for those students. Is that, is that clear?
Yeah, and I'll just add one more, Joan, let me just add one more thing to that, which is that in Northborough, we do also designate a portion of our Title I funding for math intervention services. And we focus on the early grades, the last couple of years on kindergarten, first grade, and some second grade and have increased our commitment to that by matching some operational money as well so that what used to be only a Title I program is now in our operational budget and supplemented by Title I. And so we have a person split between Lincoln Street and Peaslee and then we have an interventionist split between Proctor and Z. And so that's another source to accelerate learning for, for a group of students.
And those teachers have also been trained in Eureka Math, so they can make those connections with kids too.
Okay, so if there is, a student has difficulty in mastering any of the lessons, they can be reformatted and given one-on-one support if needed or in a small group? Is that what you're saying? Through the Title I?
Yes, it's typically in a small group.
Okay. I have a question. First comment, I love the exit ticket that a student wrote on your screen. Taking some college courses, I know you're ready to leave and they go, "How about writing an exit ticket?" And you're like, "Okay, I want to think about this." And I really love the exit ticket that the student wrote on it. He says, "Because you get a refresh on what you learned." So it's making them think about what they did in class, not that it's just separated, but how could they apply it? Or it gets a refresh. So that was a great comment to add. As far as, I had a question here about the materials, but Stephanie, you mentioned about the textbooks. So I was just wondering- So I was just wondering, when we purchased this program, besides, so it's textbooks, do we have some consumables that they have? Is it manipulation? And software? And is there any software that students could have in the account that they could go on at home, maybe it would be the Title I students, to refresh what they learned at school? Or is there any type of remediation with a software to assist those students?
So this might be two separate answers for the, are you referring specifically to elementary or middle, or did you want to hear from both?
Both, if I can?
Sure. So with the elementary, teachers, obviously, we have purchased the teacher editions for the teachers, and they will each get a manipulative kit. So the manipulatives that you are seeing in some of these pictures are things that they will be using in the classroom. So they, each classroom will have their own kit for manipulatives. And then students receive two workbooks, except kindergarten just has one. The two workbooks are a learn workbook, so that's a workbook that they're using typically in just in class where they might, any activities that they're doing, there's recording sheets in there, and then there's what they call problem sets, so that's where students have the opportunity to practice. And then they have a second book called Apply. And in the Apply book, that has, one of the things we really liked about Eureka was they have a worked example. And so it almost looks like a little cartoon, and the, which kind of refreshes what the student learned in math that day by this little cartoon character kind of giving a worked example. So when students go to do their homework or the practice problems that are there, they have something. So parents will have something that they can look at as they're doing that work, or even if a student is doing it independently and just maybe just needs a refresher, they have that opportunity to look back at that. As far as going online with this program, typically the only online portion is upper grades, like third, fourth, and fifth, will take assessments online. They actually take it on paper first, and then they enter in their information online so we can get some data back that the teachers can look at. But in terms of elementary, ST Math is the separate digital component that we have, in which, that is also used for when students, when teachers need to reinforce concepts, they can still reinforce the same concepts on ST Math. So they can align whatever a student might need to work on, they can align ST Math with that as well. So we use a different, separate digital component.
Okay, thank you.
And the middle school answer is that what Carnegie refers to as a textbook is, probably would feel more like a workbook to you, but it serves as both a textbook and a workbook. It has similar language, it has worked examples, sometimes incorrect worked examples, and the kids have to figure out what went wrong. But then it also has space where they do work. They don't typically carry the whole thing around. They often tear out the pages to the topic that they're working on, because it's kind of big.
Yeah.
So they leave most of it at school. They also have online access to the same resources and to additional resources, and then Mathia is the online adaptive software that goes with it. So there are online components and paper components.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification on textbooks, because when I heard textbooks, I said, oh, we back to the old ones where the kids would have to write the problems from the book and then solve it.
No, this would not look familiar. Yeah.
And the last question I have is, how are you sharing this with parents, and especially, you know, Kathy, you talked about the assessments. So are they, how has this new program been shared with the parents? Since parents do talk, and they may have a first grader, there's twins, let's say, one's getting the new program, the other one is in the first grade and still not into the older system. So how do you share this? And the data that you get, is that shared with parents?
So we initially just, each teacher shared with their own classroom. We had a letter communicating that they were an early adopter and what that meant. So the schools and the principals kind of sent out the first initial communication with parents. A couple of the schools have reached out, and so I've been able to go to their PTOs or itself, or we call it the parent coffees, principal coffees. So we've been able to kind of do some parent-led information sessions that way as well. Next year, we are hoping we will have, obviously, a lot more information at Curriculum Night for families, and we are hoping to do a lot more parent workshops. I feel like I don't want to jinx anything by saying anything out loud, but I want to say like, thank you for the support of the math specialists that may be coming, keeping my fingers crossed for that. Just being able to have some more hands on deck, we can offer a lot more to work with parents, because it is a shift in the math experience that we, I'm saying it collectively because I think in almost all conversations that I've had with people, we have that typical traditional style teaching, and with this shift, it's really, we're all learning, all of us, teachers, students, and parents alike. So we definitely hope to have more workshops and things available for next year.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. And Kathy, if you could through Stephanie so that she could let us know, school community members, when you have a parent night, I'd love to attend one of those to, you know, hear more about the program and to hear the reactions from parents. I think it's a great step. I see, you know, all the updates even from the students and their comments were wonderful. So thank you for the time in answering my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thanks, Joan. I did just have a couple things, not five. Well, it might be five. How, why no third grade in Northborough?
It was more just, so we had a curriculum council that we put together, which really started, the start of it was our math curriculum leaders, so that's one representative from every school. And then we expanded to make sure we had representation from ELD teachers and special ed teachers. It really started with whoever was on that curriculum council. We kind of offered to say, would you be willing to be our first adopter? Because they were the ones that piloted. So they had to check in with a teammate to make sure that their teammate would be willing to do it. Once we got that, we looked to make sure that every grade level was represented. So that's why we have at Lincoln Street, for example, we needed to have on our team, we didn't, we had a teacher who was a second grade teacher last year and moved to fourth grade, so we needed a second grade representation. So the reason, the only reason third is not in Northborough is because the third grade teacher on the team was a Southborough teacher.
Okay.
And then we had multiple fifth grade teachers, so that's why we were able to get multiple ones. But it was, yeah, it was something as simple as who was representing.
It was just interesting, because literally every other grade is third grade. So, interesting. Parent help for middle school stuff? Kids have access to the stuff? They don't tell parents they have access to the stuff at home?
It's at school, Mom. I can't, I can't, it's at school. There's no, there's no hope. Is there a way that, yeah, I can't do it.
No hope.
It's like over. It doesn't, it doesn't matter. I'll do it. I'll just fail.
Okay. Okay. Well, let's turn it to go. And you try to Google stuff and you can't find anything. So is there a way that, yeah, parents can know more about it? Like, I know, I thought somebody once showed me like, oh, it's on the website, you can just go, but I'm like, I tried it one time, I was like, I have no idea. Things are so varied and you don't know. So if there could be more, even if it's the math teachers telling the parents in the beginning year or something, so that they could support their kids at home, if the kid, you know, needs it or?
Yes, absolutely. Both resources include materials that we can share with parents, and also I know that the Malacan teachers have discovered everything from videos that give an overview of the topic or the module, to worked examples and things like that. And I think I will work with them, and we can certainly.
Push that forward.
Push that forward so that parents are more aware of the support system.
And then my last question is just about fifth graders going for math placement. How, what is the math placement test that they take? Because I know there's two different maps. There's grade level math, and then there's advanced math for once you get to the middle school, and the fifth graders take their placement test. Has the placement test changed at all, or will it change with this new thing? And how is it because not all, for example, fifth graders in Northborough, only fifth graders at one school have this newer math than the other one? So how is that going to be in regards to what their placement?
No, that's a great question. So we actually did make an adjustment to the placement test this year, and we used Carnegie materials. So it was an even playing field. So Carnegie has these Ready Assessments, they're called, for each module, and basically it's fifth grade standards, and we created the test from those. So as if a teacher was about to teach their sixth grade module, there would have been a readiness assessment that would go to say, oh, what, you know, what do students in this module need to know from fifth grade? And we used all of them, so we took all six or whatever modules they had, and we created the placement test from there. So it's, it looks more, that way it looks, it's written by Carnegie, not by either one of our two programs.
Okay.
And just to be, do they hear, have they done it yet? They?
They, yes, they have done it.
I'm just curious how the, like, if the ones who have the new math at fifth grade, how they, if they placed any differently than they would have like other, like, maybe they placed?
I mean, I think there are a couple of things to remember. One is that we use that placement assessment as one more data point. And the feedback we've gotten from the teachers so far, this was, again, this is one of the things our curriculum leaders, when I mentioned how Kathy and the middle school leaders and the high school, that's something we work on together across the system. They have told us that the new assessment this year was affirming of all the other data points they have. It did not, there weren't big shocks, there weren't big, you know, surprises, and that it aligned. And in some cases was just like, okay, yeah, this is, you know, consistent with what I thought. It also gives us systemic, system data about are there certain areas you need to focus on? So, but I think it's important to remember that there, it's just one data point. And Envision, which is our previous program, is a high-quality resource. Like, we could have stayed with Envision, and both Envision and Eureka Square are aligned to the same standards. So they are, you know, think of it as different roads to the same destination. So theoretically, our kids should do well on this readiness check written by Carnegie for the same reasons they should do well on MCAS with either program, because they're both standards aligned and they're just different paths to the same place.
No other questions? Thank you so much for your presentation.
Wonderful. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just want to say that Kathy, this is a huge undertaking, and these phases of implementation, the selection process, and Kathy has just been a fearless leader and fantastic in her collaboration with principals and with all of the curriculum leaders, and so we're really lucky to have her leading this work. Working with everyone else, they make it easy for me.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Kathy.
She's out. Moving on to our agenda, we have legislative updates.
So one quick note, the governor did sign the bill to extend remote meetings through June 30th, 2027. So that was good news, and I know that we were waiting for that to be signed, so that is in effect. And also, just a note on kind of the legislative advocacy, as the governor's budget moves through the process with the House Ways and Means and the Senate, there continues to be a tremendous amount of advocacy from MASC, MASSS, in terms of just supporting education, making sure that state aid to education is funded, circuit breaker, regional transportation reimbursement. And also, they have been advocating at the federal level, too, and speaking to the importance of federal funding, whether it's Title I funding, Title II, Title III, Title IV, IDA, that it's really critical for schools across the country to receive that funding.
Kristen, I think this is kind of like legislative type thing. Kristen received an email from Flynn, was it, from NASC?
It was Massachusetts Education Department. It was from Flynn, yeah. Oh, you're right, yeah. It was the logo, it's from Flynn, from NASC.
Yeah. And do you want to just, do you want me to do it?
Yeah, you can do it.
Okay. So it was, of course, it was basically about reevaluating the funding formula, I think. I don't, did they want us to be part of it? Or?
Yes.
Like, yeah, so I don't know how, like, is that, would that be like an individual basis for us? Or do we want to have a representation from us? Or how?
If you can forward the email to me, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, I can forward it. They were basically asking districts to send in, well, it was addressed to community members, so that was another thing. It wasn't addressed to.
I know, and I didn't, I didn't get it.
So there is a, there is a push to reevaluate the funding formula, the Chapter 70 funding formula.
Yeah, that's what it was for.
I know that it was one of the resolutions of MASC, and I think this has been in the works for a few years. So I think districts are really pushing, we're looking at the formula, given the difficult financial times many districts are in, so it is getting some momentum. So I think any participation and any opportunity to influence that work, I think, is important.
Great. Yeah, so that just came in, so we just, I figured this was kind of legislative type topic. All right, great. So moving on, approval of grants and donations. We have donations, in-kind donations for the Northborough, the NSborough Reeds. This was from their Reed Night, right?
Yeah, their NSborough Reeds Night, and just another example of the PTOs generously donating, you know, their time and funding to support these types of events. So you'll see that not only did all of the Northborough PTOs participate in NSborough Reed in terms of funding, but also the APTO at Algonquin Regional High School and the SOS in Southborough. So it's another unifying event to support a great cause, and the librarians did an amazing job, and we're very appreciative of all the support they received.
So somebody wants to make a motion to approve the monetary donation to the amount of $1,300 in in-kind donations for the NSborough Reeds.
So move it.
Second.
Motion by Bryce, seconded by Kristen. Roll call, any discussion? Roll call, vote? Joan?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. It feels weird to just do four people. So pass unanimously. Thank you so much to all of the PTOs and SOSs that contributed to help make that event another success, so we appreciate it. And to all the librarians and the volunteers who worked it to make it such a great success, so we appreciate it. It's a very long list of people who helped out with that, so. Old business, we have our school choice vote. We had our presentation last week. We had the public hearing that we waved. Any additional information at tonight? So we have to vote if we want to withdraw. Is there specific verbiage?
So I can read a motion.
Yeah.
And then someone goes, okay. Yeah.
Sorry, I have a motion.
So by law, all school districts and the Commonwealth are presumed to participate in school choice unless the school committee votes to withdraw following a public hearing and prior to June 1st. The reasons for withdrawing from school choice are the reimbursement rate of $5,000 per pupil for school choice versus the actual cost of a student expenditure, which is $20,125.72. And also, our class size is basically at capacity in Northborough. And for those reasons, make a motion or motion to withdraw from school choice for the 25, 26 school year.
So move it.
All right. A motion by Bryce, seconded by Kristen. Any discussion? Roll call, vote? Joan?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Northborough will withdraw from school choice for the academic year 25, 26. All right. Update on Peaslee Building Project?
Sure. So the next Peaslee Building meeting is April 8th, which is next week, on Tuesday. The time is still being determined. Becky has been working on the request for services for an owner's project manager. That is. That is the next big milestone for the Peaslee Building Committee. So at the 8th, I believe the goal is to kind of review the draft document that Becky has drafted, get organized, and start that process. So that is an important meeting, and just want to thank Becky for being ahead of the game.
Yeah, the next thing is that it's due 17th, April 17th.
April 17th.
So it's a little bit of a tournament.
And the good news is we, since we went through the process in Southborough, a lot of the work that we've done is very familiar. So it makes it a little bit, just a little bit, still a lot of work.
The roof, Z roof?
Yes.
We have an approval for a motion for the, now?
Are we approving, are we voting to approve the?
Well, that's wait, the approval? That's later on the agenda, I think. Right? Or is this the same?
That's the same.
It's the same, yeah. So we need to vote on this verbiage.
Yeah, so just the MSBA requires specific, specific language around the motion that needs to be made at the town meeting. So I think at the last meeting, you did vote the article, and this is actually the the motion. So, you know, I think it's more of a symbolic vote. This has been approved by the MSBA and has been given to the town that this triggered.
This is their language for us to use for the motion at the town meeting.
Correct.
And so we are submitting a motion to vote if it's either affirm the language or not. Okay. I move to accept the language for the motion for the Z elementary roof replacement feasibility and schematic design.
Should we read it into record?
I don't think you have to.
Okay.
We'll put it into record at the town hall.
It will be at the town meeting, yeah.
You can.
I'm, I'm fine with reading.
I was gonna just do the headliner there.
Yeah. Yeah. That's fine. I just didn't know legally, like, because I know sometimes they're like, nope, you need to read it. Oh, you know, so just want to make sure of that.
Should I do it again?
No, you had a motion. Motion by Bryce, seconded by Kristen to approve verbiage as stated in the packet. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, vote. Joan?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Passed unanimously. Enrollments. What, that was the right, we didn't have two votes, right? We just have the one.
So in your packets, the enrollment report as of March 17th, 2025, and we are trending as projected, and we're keeping a close eye on kindergarten, but I think our numbers for the number of sections is accurate so far. Keith and Sheila are monitoring the waiting lists very closely, specifically around kindergarten. So each each month for the next several months will be really important in terms of the number of sections in kindergarten.
How do they develop the numbers, like, there's the actual numbers, but there's the projected numbers?
For kindergarten?
Yes.
So those are actually the known number of students who have actually enrolled in each school. So those are known numbers. So these are actuals.
I think, I think it's by probably a census, town census is how you get.
Well, we start with.
Like beforehand, right?
Yeah, beforehand, we just took an average number of enrollment over the past three years for kindergarten. And then determine the number of sections, number of teachers we needed, and then now we're just monitoring to make sure that we don't need to add a section.
But that's still a prediction for kind of case on. Yeah.
So we do have open seats, which is good news. And I think the next, typically the next month, registration slows to trickle, and then summer, that's when we have another unknown. And then Becky will go over the FY25 budget line item transfer report and the monthly general fund expenditure reports.
Well, I'm happy to report that since last month's meeting, we have had no new function codes that have been over expended, so nothing needs to be voted there. In terms of the FY25 monthly general fund report, though, so this report actually is for the first three quarters of this school year, 2025. So we are entering in the final phase of the operational budget. At this point in time, we do have $402,123 remaining on the bottom line, which represents 1.38% of the operational budget. Really, things continue to hold steady in Northborough. That is only a decrease of about $25,000 from the February 28th report. The two areas that are really our key drivers in the operational budget are the substitute long-term mine item, and you can see that is over expended by $283,000. And then our transportation, special education, and we've been talking about that this year, where we do have funds set aside based on this new contract. And so that is over expended by $443,000. A couple of other lines, though, that I just wanted to point out to you is that we are watching our heating line item. We are seeing an increase in our invoices, and that's due to the natural gas. I'm sure you've all seen it on the news, that the supply costs are coming in higher. So that's something that we really are watching right now. However, we have modified our projections based off of the invoices that we've received. So we feel good about the numbers that are included in the budget. And then also, our health services, special education. We have had to contract with an outside agency for OT and SLP services due to staff absences again. So really, the staff absences are a couple of key contributors. We've had more than usual this year in the first place, as one of the drivers of the budget.
It's the type of thing, it's like, we can't really anticipate it. You know, it's not like, you know.
But also, I think that the finance department did an excellent job creating a line item for for leaves. Though before it was in the general salary fund, so you never could really call out what it was. This way, we can actually see what, you know, whether it's medical leaves or is costing us, which will give us, I think, better data as we go forward.
I know the budgets are frozen, as you're saying, and I had a friend of mine with a teacher at high school. She's like, yeah, so now we're frozen, so even though we have the money, I think you can't use it. I was like, wow, that's not true. I said, I think you're not getting the right information to you, I said. So basically, yeah, if you, you know, are out of blue markers and you want to get a whole new pack of markers because you don't have your blue, then, yeah, you're not going to be able to get your markers. But, I said, if you're, all your markers are dead and you've got money in your budget, then yes, you just have to go through the Becky to get your markers. You can still get your markers, okay? So.
But you gotta go through Becky.
But you gotta go through Becky to get your markers, okay? So, you know, you better be, they better all be dead, you know? I don't want just, you know, the blue by now.
I have lots of conversations with principals. So if there are things that are needed, not markers.
Exactly. Yeah, and that's what I was trying to explain, like, and they're like, yeah, but it was in our budget and we just didn't spend it yet. I was like, and it's still there. It's just, you know, you have to be careful.
As we approach the end of the year, when we freeze, we typically freeze it anyway.
Every.
After April vacation.
Yeah.
We just did it a little earlier. It makes it easier for the closeout. And again, if there are things that are needed, I am talking to people and I am approving.
Yeah, yeah. Spend your money. Okay, so our motion to approve the FY25 monthly general fund expenditure report until audited as of February 28th, 2025? March, I know, is that a typo there?
Yeah.
Yeah, it says February 28th.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. And we, that's the only thing we have to vote, right? Because there's no line transfer to vote, so. Somebody wants to make a motion for it.
Got it. Let's move over to second.
Moved by Kristen, seconded by Bryce. Any discussion? Roll call, vote. Joan?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Passed unanimously. Thank you and to your, you and your team for all their hard work. Appreciate it. Members' reports, school committee member's reports. Anything, Kristen?
Yeah, the wellness committee has met. The policies committee hasn't met since our last meeting, and I guess that's still existing. But the wellness committee has a meeting, and they have wellness week this week.
Yeah. Tonight, they have something, I think, at the library.
They have stuff every night this week, actually. They have play, they've been passing away, so yeah, it's nice, it's like, yeah, well, it's there. They have the major clubs, and tomorrow they have, they have stuff all week. And then they have a little circle of events to try and do all the things that continue to apply for that. Yeah. So that's all around how Northborough and Southborough. But they're also working on a lot of different initiatives, with the exception, it was huge lots of towns. Mary Ellen is fantastic, she's very ambitious, so. But there are a lot of great conversations, I think, about what they can do to help support wellness in different schools and working with the health department in Southborough and reaching out to the community as well. But it is wellness week, so I think it's definitely the first of them.
Joan?
Yes, I have one school committee report, and that is from the Northborough Ed Foundation. The spring silent auction is open right now, and today's featured items consist of a Northborough youth basketball rec-recorization, not the travel team. There is a silent auction for Northborough youth soccer registration, and a Northborough-Southborough youth football new player tackle football regulation, registration plus two sweatshirts, and also the Northborough-Southborough youth lacrosse boys registration and T-shirt. So that is open in the silent auction, and you can get that on the website. Also, registration is still open for the team trivia night, which is this Friday, April the 4th, 2025, at Ciprin Key Golf Club. And doors open at 7:00. First question is at 7:30. You can register your team of two to four players, and spectators are welcome with a $10 suggested donation at the door. And if anybody wants to, in the public wants to create a team of two to four players, they can go on to the website for the NEF to get their registration form. Thank you.
Joan, we do, we did register for a school committee team, so.
I was kind of voluntold.
Yeah, yeah, you were.
You volunteered.
Totally my bad. Totally my bad on that one. I, I maybe it was because last year we went.
Two years ago, two years ago. We had a great time.
And it was so much fun.
So much fun.
So much.
You're like, oh, Bryce.
I was like, oh, yeah, so it's definitely Bryce wants to do this again.
Our team name is Robert's Rules.
Robert's Rules. Right. Right on.
I love it. I love it. Yeah, so that's, did she ding you again?
I think she dinged.
Yes, Joan?
Double ding.
Double ding.
I just, I didn't know if it was her the first time. I just wanted to know if, who are the team members? Do you have a team name? And are you going with team outfits?
Well, now, I guess we need to coordinate that.
Sure, sure, definitely not. Well, checks. I'll be coming from work.
We registered.
We're Robert's Rules.
We registered Superintendent Martino, myself, Kristen, and Bryce. Were the four that were registered.
You guys are going to be winners, of course, like usual. Good luck, guys.
Yeah, the only reason we didn't two years ago is because we all just got tired.
We left early.
We left early. We sleep early.
I think that's our escape plan.
Yeah, yeah.
But this is like my one night out, I'm not leaving.
Oh, yeah. You're on your way.
You tell them keep down. You gotta hold it down.
I got a baby sister, I'm staying until the end.
Bunch of us got to like nine o'clock, and we're like, you done?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we, it was, it was tough because we were so close to winning.
Yes.
You know, by us leaving, like, it just.
We left that big prize on the table.
We did.
We had choices.
We had to. All right, so my school committee member reports, NSPAC, our administration meeting is rescheduled for tomorrow. Unfortunately, I can't make it on a Thursday. But they have next Tuesday, April 8th, at 7:00 to 8:00 PM, Southborough Youth and Family Services Community Focus Group. So they have that as a virtual event. You can register on their webpage for that. On April 10th, their general meeting, with special guests from the Northborough and Southborough Chiefs of Police will be there, and that's going to be at the Marlboro Library. But that's going to be there. You can register online for that, and that's going to be on Thursday, April 10th, from 9:30 to 10:30 AM. And then Going the Distance Award, put on your future calendars, May 22nd, from 6:00 to 7:30, at Algonquin in the auditorium. It was there last year in the auditorium. They moved from the cafeteria, and I thought it was so nicely done. So it's nice that they are going to do that again. There. And then the PTOs meeting, Superintendent Advisory thinks, as we hear from PTOs, things are going great with all their things, so. It's not solar, but it's air conditioning, kind of. Keith, are all of them at Melican all?
Installed and ready to go.
Okay.
It's only going to be 65 degrees through June 18th.
I got, I got complaints that it's so hot, and I'm so hot. School was so hot today. I'm like, oh, I don't want to get it.
Those in between, when we're in these shoulders, yeah, these, these are the tough times to keep things regulated.
Well, also, talking about heat in those buildings, like, I know, every room, every floor is so different. That's the downside when you have these older buildings.
It is, and then the ability to control it just isn't there, and, you know, it's, it's, yeah.
Just two temperatures on and off.
On and off.
Pretty much, these are wide open or closed.
Well, I, I, my preschool were the same thing, like, the thermostat is two doors down from us in that room. And so by the time it gets to me, it has to be like 90 in that room for it just to get to like 70 in mine, so.
And the variation, even with the activity that's in the school, it does have an impact on it. So, yeah, I, I, I'm starting to hear that this time of year, and the hope is that we don't get to those 90 degree days.
Especially with the delivery charges we get.
I know. Electricity.
Turned down. But the problem is, is that, you know, obviously, you don't want to be shutting things down too early, because then when you have to repressurize them, that sometimes creates issues for the larger, older buildings. So we're, that's a constant game that Bud is playing, and he's usually pretty good at it. As long as we don't get a cold snap in late April, we're usually good.
No other school committee member reports? No educational policy at this time? Policy development and/or distribution? So the policies that are listed here are the ones that were presented as first reads, second reads?
First reads.
First reads at the combined meeting. I said for us to put them onto ours so that we can just have any kind of discussion or anything that we had. I did look over them, and there was a couple little questions I had. One of them was about for the bullying prevention intervention, intervention policy. In the previous one, it had expulsion mentioned. This one is not called out in paragraph one about expulsion. But then when you click the district's bullying prevention intervention plan, it mentions expulsion.
As a repercussion?
As one of the, yeah, like, students or staff members who engage in bullying. the district's bullying prevention intervention plan, it mentions expulsion.
As a repercussion?
As one of the, yeah, like, students or staff members who engage in bullying, cyberbullying, subject to a range of disciplinary sanctions, including but not limited to reprimand, detention, suspension, termination of employment, or other sanctions determined by the school. And expulsion is listed in that.
So once, once this is approved
Then they'll redo the
And follow line of the
Intervention
Plan.
Okay, yeah. So that was a thing, because again, that was dated from '21, so I assumed that it was, but I just wanted to make sure that that was
Can you send me that in an email?
And then there is a strike through that says, except for bullying resulted in the students, and it's only students is cross off, but I think it has to be, the strike through has to be students or resulted in the staff member's termination. Same, same first paragraph of the, the A155. So I looked at it and seemed straight, and it looked like it stopped at students, but I think it has to be or also resulted in the staff member's termination. So, just like that. But, yeah, so that was just one of the things that I noticed. I didn't have any major questions on anything else, but I will, and I will suggest to the other committee members also to get them, is it by, is it the end of the month you're doing it, in May?
Yes.
First, right? So by April 15th?
Or like to get feedback?
To get feedback, too?
So I'll have Cheryl send out a reminder.
That actually just, I don't see that, I think now that, that section, another strike through, it's still there in the new, I wonder if the strike through was actually not even supposed to be there. So I don't know, have they incorporated that one?
So, except for bullying resulted in, it should still say in the students or a step, so that students shouldn't be struck, struck at all.
Because then you, like, what follows it is the bigger policy, and it's still there. Yeah.
Okay.
I could be wrong, we need to check with
So if you, you can send that to me, and I'll take a closer, closer look at it, and then feedback is due May first, and then we'll reconvene the, the joint policy subcommittee, and we'll take all the feedback and incorporate the edits
Okay.
Preparation for our June combined.
Okay, so you want feedback, maybe, maybe Cheryl can send it out, April, or, April for date, and then have it due by the end of the month. Okay, perfect. Any other requests or anything for policy? Does that work for you? Okay. Distribution of personnel report.
So in your packets, the personnel reports. So just, we did have our network of technology systems administrator did leave Northborough, and we had William Knapp, who is a Northborough resident, and he was a technician in Southborough, the Southborough Public Schools. He took on that position and started, I believe, last month, and has done a great job. Will did a great job for Southborough, and we're only hearing positive feedback, so that was an appointment.
Who was the person before?
Ken Tracy.
Ken Tracy. And they left?
She took a different position.
Out of our district.
Out of the school system.
Out of our, okay.
Yep.
Transfer food services.
Where'd they transfer from?
I think she has changed positions.
At the same school?
Correct. Role.
Gotcha.
Role change, shift.
We have approval of the capital planning subcommittee meeting minutes on October 22nd, 2024, approval of open meeting minutes, March 5th, 2025, approval of executive session meeting minutes of March 5th to be retained, and meeting minutes from the special open meeting of March 25th, 2025. So we have approval of three, and then approval and retaining of one executive session meeting.
So you want two motions?
One.
You can still move.
So move, so move.
I mean, I said it well.
You said it well.
Moved by Bryce.
Second.
Seconded by Kristen. Any discussion on any of them? Roll call vote. Joan?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Myself as a yes, passes unanimously. We will be retaining those executive session meeting, meeting minutes that was about security reasons, and that's why we are retaining them for a sensitive topic that was discussed. I want to extend a thank you to Mariana for her meeting minutes, her notes. I think she was the only one that did it. So, thank you so much, Mariana. Appreciate it. Joan?
And then also Lauren Bailey for the executive session minutes.
Yes, and Lauren, and Lauren for the executive session minutes. Thank you, Joan.
Yeah, good job on her part.
Future agenda items, Melican yonder pouches, approval of contract food services management company, that will be a vote in May. So we're doing that because the high school's not.
All three districts are, so.
So all three are, but do we have, but we're not going to do it at a combined meeting? We're doing it
Potentially, so we'll, I think we need to see where we are after reviewing all the proposals.
Okay.
And then at that point, Keith, Becky, and I can regroup with the chairs and see how best to move forward.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll work closely with you and Chris Covina, and she'll
Okay.
How many voters did it?
We received four, and we are reviewing two to three.
NEF presentation, ELA presentation, retiree recognition, election officers, curriculum, instruction review process. Joan?
Just one thing to be added on to number six. Besides election of officers, we will also elect the three members from Northborough to serve on the supervisory unit number three.
Okay.
Add it to the list.
Add it.
Number six, A.
Add it, got it. Any other things anybody needs to add? Attention? No? Approval of those apparel, we are up to date with that.
Couple days, another one coming.
Be ready, Bryce. Be ready to click.
I got there before you.
I know you did. I know you did, you did go.
Super proud.
I know, I was too.
Overall, family.
Yeah. Audience sharing. No? Did you want to say, no? Okay, there. Any other business? No other business? Our next scheduled school committee meeting will be Wednesday, May 7th, and the combined meeting is June 16th. If there's nothing else, I really don't want to end this meeting at 8:10, but
You're the chair.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So?
Motion by Bryce, seconded by Kristen. Roll call vote. Joan?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Myself as a yes, we are adjourned at now, 8:11 p.m.